For tonight is invocation. invocation provided by Pastor Steve Hyson.
Shall we pray? Gracious Lord, we have gathered here this evening for the City Commission, for your leadership, your guidance, but first of all, may we begin by you surrounding our community with your love and your presence, and especially those in need. But as we continue through this evening, and the decisions are to be made, may your wisdom and presence be a part of that, as we leave this into your hands and your guidance, in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Is there anybody from the audience who'd like to lead us in pledge allegiance? Molly?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Looking down, next item on our agenda would be personal appearances. We have with us Jen Cook, Activities and Sales Director.
Darcy has turned on this slideshow presentation, but it doesn't look like it's on the right slide. Good evening. I'm here to give you guys a year in review of what the El Dorado Convention and Visitors' Bureau has done in the past year. Molly and I prepared a PowerPoint presentation just to put it all in front of you. Just to start off with what we do, we put heads in beds by bringing events that enhance our community here to El Dorado. We market El Dorado to visitors, we promote local community events, and we facilitate, we manage our facilities here in El Dorado that we rent out. Looking back at 2014, 2015, we wanted to kind of put it all together in an easy way to explain it, so we thought we would tell you what we attempted, what we accomplished, and what we attended. We'll start first with the fact that we bid for the Kansas Sampler for 2016, 2017. We've talked about that. We were runner-up to Winfield. We also put a bid in for the Kansas Museum Association Conference for 2018. We are also in the final contestants for those, but with our new director coming on to the Kansas Oil Museum, we wanted to go ahead and wait until he was more acclimated to his new position. Things that we accomplished in the past year, we held our first Oktoberfest last year, which is now part of the El Dorado Fall Festival, grew that event. That was a successful event. I think the community really enjoyed that. The CBB hosted the Mayor's Dinner for the first time. I think that also went over well. We did that at Coops Museum. We were part of the Women's Fair at Century Two, collaborating with Main Street, The Chamber, and Inc. We worked with local businesses and brought a lot of people over to El Dorado from that event. We hosted the AAU Regional Track Meet again here in El Dorado this year, with numbers being up about twenty, about 200 participants. We hosted the 3v3 Soccer Tournament again out here at our soccer facility, had a few extra teams this year, and I believe the majority of all of those were out of town. I don't believe we had any local teams, so that was successful. We worked with Oz Endurance and did the Kansas Gravel Grind, 50K, here out at BG Stadium. That race had participants from eight different states, so we brought in quite a few people from out of town. I can't believe that they wanted to run 31 miles in Kansas at the end of June, but it went over really well. We had our Farmer's Market Grand opening. It wasn't the most successful. We're still working on trying to bring in some more vendors to that, but we did open, and we did have some people say they really liked the building, and produce was sold. So hopefully next year, we can bring some more vendors to the market. We helped with the Kansas, or the Lantern Festival, working with that company and bringing them here to town. That festival went over really well. We had over 4,000 people at that event. Besides the workers, I think I may have recognized 10 people. So a lot of people from out of town came to that event. And then we bid on the Kansas Shrine Bowl, and we were the winner for that for 2017. So other projects that we accomplished, that we worked on throughout this, with others throughout the state, we designed the South Central Tourism Region brochure for 2015, We worked with all of the counties in South Central Kansas that goes out all over the state, but we designed it, we wrote it, we printed it. Molly and I did that project. The theme for the brochure then went into the theme for the tent at the Kansas Sampler Festival for the South Central Kansas Tourism Region. We put together an athletic facilities guide for El Dorado. It's still in, in the works, but it's out there, and we're helping promote our recreation and sport facilities. And then we had a really popular late guide ad that's down at the bottom with our, kind of our new theme that we like to go with, "Come see what's blooming in El Dorado," flowers that Sue's become famous for. We attended the TAC Conference in Manhattan, the Tourism Industry Association of Kansas. We were invited to, Molly and I, when I say "we," to the Rural Leaders of Kansas Retreat in Topeka. They invite roughly 30 people from across the state to that. We attended the Farmer's Market Conference, and I was asked to run a breakout session at that conference. We attended the We Can Conference in Salina, and I was a speaker at that conference and also ran a breakout session. I attended the National Association of Sports Commission Symposium in Milwaukee. We are now members of that association, and I think they'll be really beneficial to helping us grow our tournament activity here in El Dorado. And we attended the Kansas Sampler Festival in Wamigo. Fast forwarding to today and what we look to do for the next year, we are attempting to land the 2016 NJCAA Division One Cross Country Championship. We worked on that bid with the college and have that just placed here September 1st. Again, trying to bring back AAU Regional Track Meet. I went and spoke with that group again, and I believe they'll be coming back. They really enjoy El Dorado and our stadium. We will be bringing back the 3v3 Live Soccer Tournament. We are working with Ross Finer for the 2017 Drums Across Kansas. That would be a large event that would come to BG Stadium. We also placed a bid for either 17, 18, or 2019 NJCAA Division One Outdoor Track and Field Championship. Worked again with the college on that and just placed that bid on the 1st of September. We will be bidding on the Kansas Sampler Festival again. That bid opens in December. We have been looking at bringing in dog shows. That's been a lead, and surprisingly, something that people travel really well for. And then hopefully, in the future, if we can get a disc golf facility here in El Dorado, we would like to work on that. Things that we are accomplishing in 2015, 2016, our El Dorado Fall Festival is getting ready to come up here September 18th and 19th. We worked with local businesses, The Chamber, and the Kansas Oil Museum, and the Hundred Years of Oil to plan this event, so that will be coming up here in just two weeks. We will be attending the State Fair here next week for, to promote El Dorado and South Central Kansas Tourism Region. We are also going to be hosting the annual meeting for South Central Kansas Tourism Region here in El Dorado. The Seroptimus International El Dorado Conference, they decided to come here for their annual meeting, and that's actually coming up here in the fall. Lantern Fest has voiced their desire to come back to El Dorado and bring their event back here. And of course, we'll be beginning the stages of planning the 2017 Kansas Shrine Bowl. We will also be attending in 2015, 2016, the South Central Kansas Tourism Annual Meeting here in El Dorado. Will be reattending the TAC Conference, which will be in Wichita this year. The National Association of Sports Commission Symposium, we'll be attending that again in 2016. And then we'll attend the Kansas Sampler Festival in Winfield. They've actually asked us to help be on their planning committee of that, so that will be good for us when we go to bid on that again. And then the Farmer's Market Conference. Facility management, we've continued to manage the Civic Center, the Train Depot, and BG Stadium, and work closely with the EFABC, but now we've had the addition of the Farmer's Market. It's been rented twice now already for class reunion and another party. And then the addition of helping rent Prairie Trail's Clubhouse, helping David Alper with that. We put together numerous reports for you guys to look at. I won't go into detail over those, but if you have any questions, I can help you guys out. We have our annual usage for me, our meeting facilities, our athletic facilities. We even put some reports together over Oz Endurance, their three biggest races, and what they bring for outside participation. We have our bed tax meeting, uh, report, and then we also have the annual EFABC report, which we do every year for that committee. And our future goals, we would like to obtain the Kansas Sampler Festival. That's high on our list. We would like to increase athletic tournament activity here in El Dorado, and I think that relies heavily on our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then we'd like to have an office space conducive to welcoming outside visitors and locals where they can come and get information. And that's pretty much it for our past year. Do you guys have any questions?
On the breakout of the Fall Festival that's coming up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oktoberfest, is it gonna be Friday night or Saturday night?
It's going to be Friday night.
And then, okay. And also, on the Walnut Festival, that is not a school function, that's a city function, right?
I don't believe it's a city function. The Chamber, it's always been housed underneath the Chamber, and they work, I believe, with many different organizations, churches. The schools are invited to perform, but it's not a school function, no, or a city function.
Okay. But the Oktoberfest will be on Friday night?
It will be on Friday night.
Will they serve alcohol on Saturday?
That, I believe I have heard that they are keeping a beer garden open for the Chamber Car Show.
There's been some people question us for allowing alcohol down there during the school functions, and I just wanted to let them know that will be roped off, and kids cannot go in that area.
It will be roped off, and it will be away from the activities of Walnut River Festival. Walnut River Festival will be a block or two down from that.
Okay. And the car show will be around?
The car show will be in between where the beer garden is located and the stage, and then the car show, and then Walnut River Festival.
There were some people that contacted me, they had some concern about that, and I just wanted to make it clear that it's not gonna be, there's not gonna be people running around with beer in their hand.
Yes, no.
Okay.
We collaborated with, when we put together all of these events into one, the Walnut River Festival, the car show, and Oktoberfest, we collaborated just to make it one big weekend. After listening to some of the businesses say that closing off the streets multiple weekends in a row, they didn't know if they thought that was conducive to their businesses, they thought one big weekend where everybody comes out would be better, and so bringing all these events together.
Well, I think it's a good idea to do them all together, but I just wanted to clear that people aren't gonna be walking around with beer in their hand.
It will be snow fenced off.
Okay.
So, but the Chamber Car Show and the Walnut River Festival, those questions can always be directed. I would be glad to help, and then they are chamber events, so they could help you as well.
When I get my phone calls again, I'll forward them on to you.
Sometimes it's hard to distinguish who to ask questions to.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What was the last thing you said about an office?
We would like, something that we've had brought to our attention, and something that I've noticed when I do go around to other communities that have convention and visitors bureaus, is they, if you're traveling out of town and you're going somewhere to pick up maps or information of what's going on, or if you have questions, often it's a place you can walk right in and speak to somebody. And I think that with the confusion of the Chamber and with Main Street, the C, our CBB is the only office that you can't walk into and really get information or ask questions. People are confused that we're located inside a city hall. I know a lot of people go looking for us at the Civic Center because we manage the Civic Center, so.
I have one quick question. I hope we're not putting you on the spot. When, in regards to the Farmer's Market, I know we kinda had some produce vendors, you know, fall off after a while, and I noticed this past weekend, it seemed to be a pretty successful kinda craft deal at the depot. Are we making any effort in trying to recruit those kinda folks? Is that a part of the market plan?
Yes.
Okay.
We, Molly and I had packets sent, made up with a welcoming letter. We went and visited all the vendors that were set up on the streets, Gambino's, the vendors at the market, and we did an open house at the Farmer's Market. We had packets at the Farmer's Market once it opened, and anybody that we caught word, whether they had soaps, or if they had crafts, one gentleman wanted to bring his knife sharpening device into the market, and we didn't think that that would be safe. I think that was the only person that we turned away, but we are looking for.
Do, were a lot of those folks, Butler County folks, or local?
That is one woman who runs the Train Depot every year to do that large. So she's over it, and then she brings some people in, and I don't think a lot of them are local. Eureka.
Well, it'd be interesting to see. I mean, I just was surprised, driving by several times to turn out, and what appeared to be.
Yeah.
And everyone on my Facebook page seems to be selling something, so surely there's some folks that would be interested.
Yeah, we, we had a couple that came to us about soap or different things, but I think that with the other Farmer's Markets still being located under the tree, and people knowing they're there, our vendors would come, one of our vendors worked at the refinery, so he wasn't always, always able to set up every time.
Yeah, but we are open to crafts and additional.
I mean, I think it's, real name is a community market. It envisions exactly what you thought, year-round, different events and activities, and so.
Yeah, and I just think it's really important for people to realize that.
Absolutely.
That it's more than just the produce, and that, you know, I mean, to me, I'm thinking right now should be, ideally, fall and spring would be busy times, just 'cause it's usually nice for out, and you'd wanna spend, and I understand maybe not the produce department as much.
But other things.
But everything else, but anyways, I was just curious, after seeing that at the depot.
We are working with the YMCA. They're gonna have their haunted house in there this year for the Main Street Trick or Treat.
That'd be cool.
Event, since it's moving off of Main Street and down to Gordy Park, the YMCA's going to use it as their haunted house, so that will be good marketing for the building.
Cool.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks, Molly.
All right. And now the time in our agenda for public comment. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? I think none will close that part of our agenda for public comment and move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda has your minutes from August 17, August 12, and our September 2nd meeting, also the appropriations listing. If you had a chance to read this, we received this information in the middle of last week. Anybody have any particular comments they'd like to make on the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda be, as presented, be approved.
Second. It's been moved from seconded. Further consent agenda, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on our agenda is amending the Title IV of the City of El Dorado Municipal Code relating to the sale of alcoholic beverages. You're gonna do it?
Mr. Mayor and Commission, a few weeks ago, we passed a cereal malt beverage license, and it came to our attention after that we had, I, I had made a mistake in the, in reading the code, and I'd switched the liquor and the cereal malt beverage around. So I did some research, Jim Murphins helped me, had some other help from the state as well. Our cereal malt beverage regulations for the City of El Dorado do not allow the sale of cereal malt beverages within 200 feet of a library, school, or church. The restaurant downtown is located near a church, and so we thought that we could exempt the downtown area from this regulation. The state of Kansas does not exempt cereal malt beverages within a, within any distance of a church, school, or library. They do have an exit, or they do have a distance regulation for liquor stores, microbreweries, and farm wineries, but again, we, we don't have those in our, we don't have anything stricter in our code for liquor stores, or liquor licenses, just the cereal malt beverage. So what we're requesting, again, is to exempt the C2 area, the C2 zoning area, from the 200-foot rule. That would include mainly the Main Street area and on Central, right?
No, C2 would just strictly be down, your downtown core area, yeah.
So, any questions?
What's your ordinance number gonna be?
G-1204.
What's the close, real quick, you said there, we have one downtown that's clove?
The, the new Mexican restaurant is about two doors down from, I don't know the name of it.
Latter Day Saints.
The old KG building.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Sorry, I couldn't remember they were down there.
I, I think there's actually another church in the area, too, that's further down.
Worship center, yeah, prayer center, which they use as offices now. Your comprehensive plan and zoning regulations talk about the C2 district and what type of uses are compatible down there, and churches are a thing that's discouraged in downtown areas, as part of your comp plan and zoning regulations. We do have that older, established Latter Day Saints church, but yeah, the downtown C2 areas is heavily mixed use, but there are some, some things that it kinda discourages Planning Commission, City Commission to look, look at.
I think that's consistent. Cereal malt beverage, question I have, is there a, is there an alcohol limit that's attached to that?
It's 3:2 content. That's, that's the highest you can go with a cereal malt beverage license.
By volume, and that was, one's by volume and one's by alcohol content. I think it's by volume.
It might be.
But it's, and so if a business, if this same business had won a liquor license, they could have it. They could have margaritas if they wanted it, but our code didn't, doesn't currently allow it for cereal malt beverage, which is just, what the beer, whatever you could buy in a grocery store, you could buy at this restaurant if you approve this change. And any, anywhere in the C2 district could buy the same kind of beverages with alcohol that you can get in a grocery store, convenience store today.
They'll be subject to the same time limits that other CMV licenses and liquor licenses are subs, subject to, so they won't be able to serve before noon on Sundays, that kind of thing.
Makes sense to me.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G-1204, amending Title IV of the City of El Dorado Municipal Code relating to the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything to say? I think this is, I think this is a good move for our downtown district. I think it fits the comp plan. How we got here is one question, but it's the right place to be.
I agree, and thank you, Susie in the chamber. When you guys share your thoughts, I do appreciate getting those.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda is League of Municipality Delegates.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, each year, we're required to nominate three delegates and three alternate delegates that go to the League of Kansas Municipalities meeting. These delegates will stay, there's a final session on Monday, and then after that, there is a meeting, and they will provide the changes to any bylaws or anything that the League has made, the League Committee has made, and we vote on those with other cities' delegates. Last year, Mayor Fag, Commissioner Locke, and Commissioner Young were voting delegates. Myself, Kurt Bookout, and Brian Gartland were the alternates. We've provided the list of people that are going to be there in October, so if you would like to pick from those, if you're not gonna stay Monday, you might wanna take your name off.
Monday is the 12th?
Yeah.
I will say, I will probably be driving to Kansas City that morning for a flight for work, so I'd probably be out of that.
This meeting will probably take place around 3, 3:00 or 3:30 on Monday. I can't remember the schedule for sure, but.
Okay. I have it on my calendar to attend, so I'll plan to be there.
I'll be there.
Okay, guys.
We need a third.
They're all looking at me.
It doesn't have to be all commissioners. It can, you can staff for their delegate. I, I will be there.
Let me ask a question, Tabitha. When they talk about changes to the municipal code.
That, it would be, our, not our municipal code, it's changes to the league's.
League, okay. Now, is that something you'll get in advance?
I think so. I think they send it out here pretty quickly, but I'm, I don't, I'm not sure when. I can ask when they're gonna send it.
I mean, the idea of voting on something that I haven't read till then.
No, they, they give it to you in advance, and I'm, and then you get a packet when you go, so.
I don't think I've ever heard anyone vote no at one yet, though.
Oh, I'm sure not, but.
From what that's word. It's pretty casual.
It's always the first time.
Two years ago, it got a little crazy.
I've thought about it.
I, I can be number three.
Okay. And your alternates?
Tabitha, would you serve as an alternate?
Sure.
Not having talked to any, anybody else, whether or not they would serve as an alternate or not.
Susie?
I will willingly be voluntold to serve as an alternate.
Okay.
Voluntold.
I think that Brian usually stays for that part, too, so he might be a good third.
If he is willing to be voluntold, we can assign him as a delegate, alternate.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Kendra Wilkinson, Vince Haynes, and Greg Lewis to be named voting delegates, the annual business meeting of the Kansas League of Municipalities, and that Brian Gartland, Tabitha Sharp, and Susie Locke be named alternates.
Second.
One more thing, real quick. We will call a special meeting for this, because there are four of you going, so I don't see you discussing any city business. You'll be in the meetings most of the time, but we'll, we will call a special meeting, and they have a form that we use for this one.
Okay.
The only thing I'll tell you is get there early for the, for the cool meetings, 'cause they fill up fast. You'll be out in the hallway if you get there late.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the nominations? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next thing we have is the YMCA MOU.
Yes, sir. Last month, Andy Waller, who was the president of our El Dorado YMCA Board, contacted me about, to discuss trying to put together a partnership designed to maximize the experience our children have in athletic endeavors primarily. And so, because we both have leagues, we both have organized sports, and, and so we thought that was a great idea, started those discussions, came up with an MOU, and. And so, because we both have leagues, we both have organized sports, and so, we thought that was a great idea, started those discussions, came up with an MOU, and sent that to the city's rec board, created MOU in conjunction with the YMCA, both their local board and staff, and city Wichita, the metro staff. And so, developed that MOU, sent it to the rec committee. They thought it was a good idea, made one, one change, the original MOU called for each organization to do things that are mutually beneficial. How it was worded, it was like, if it's good for the city and it's good for the Y, then we ought to do it. The city's rec commission recommended taking out the mutually beneficial words and said, this isn't about the two organizations, this is about the children. And so, if it's best for the children, then whether it's good for the City of El Dorado's rec program or the Y's rec program, that's not why we're doing it. We're doing it for the benefit of the youth, to get more kids playing more sports, be more active. And so, so what you see tonight does not contain those two words, and other than that, I think it's as was presented to them. I view this as a first step. It'll end up telling the world, the city commission of the City of El Dorado thinks it's a good idea to try to do the best job we can for our children's activities. When the Y board adopts it, it'll tell the world that the Y wants the same thing, and so it'll be a first step. And so then, I think we'll start, once that occurs, then we'll have, start having discussions about activities that we can joint, do together, look at the world differently. And so, just like when we were talking about the rec master plan, when I think about facilities in the City of El Dorado, I don't limit those facilities to facilities that the City of El Dorado owns. I include the facilities that USD 490 owns, that USD 375 owns, is the right one in it, and the YMCA and the college, those all, all those entities, we all have facilities. And so, when we think about building new or maintaining what we have, that broader scope seems to make sense, and I think this is just reaffirming the desire of the commission and the Y.
Well, I just want to say, I obviously, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful step, and thank you to you and the rec board, and Jessica, and Andy, and the folks at the Y, and the Y board, eventually, for coming, you know, it's getting, I just think it's a really good first step, and I think, you know, we stress constantly as a commission the importance of partnership and coming together for the common good, and I just think this could potentially be something we can all be really, really proud of.
I guess I echo that, you know, working with the Y and the partnerships are what, what we want. As I read through this document, though, this is just saying we're agreeing to agree. Is that right?
That's right.
It seems a pretty formal process to agree to agree, and it says we're gonna come back with additional agreements. Is that something that's gonna come to the commission?
I, I assume it will. I haven't really given that much thought, and I think the first thing was setting the, setting the tone, and by making that statement, it is. It's about doing what's viewed as what's best for kids, and not what's best for...
Right.
In my mind, it takes away the competition of who's gonna win and who's gonna lose in the numbers game.
Well, and I think, you know, it is, I kind of agree with what you're saying, but it's a good, just with the history and everything, it's a good first step in clearing the slate, saying that we want to start fresh and, and see where we can go from here. As far as our involvement, I would assume, I mean, I kind of lean on staff as, I'm sure the Y staff, and then, you know, we have the rec board, the Y board, and kind of, you know, sorting through all that, and of course, Kevin...
I think if you had done a comprehensive document, you would never see it.
No, I would agree.
Yeah, actually, yeah, we tried it for how many years?
We tried it for a year and a half.
And I'm sure with different programs, I mean, I'm kind of speaking out of turn, but with different programs, we're kind of gonna be in a little bit of a trial and error. I mean, it's not like we're gonna be able to get it all figured out in one...
At least things fairly fluid, so that you guys can make decisions and agree to agree appropriately at the appropriate time, right?
And I think, and I think that before, when, when you think about a comprehensive document, it's comprehensive, we're not there yet. With this document, it's probably too late, maybe, to talk about basketball, but it's certainly not too late to talk about soccer in the spring, don't we? So, so now, we can have, we can talk about a specific item in its own, and that's what's envisioned, and so, we'll talk about those specific opportunities well in advance of anything already being done, and I think, I think that's how it was framed. When we were first asked to have a conversation, I was thinking comprehensive and was, and when I saw the document, it was, I don't, it wasn't comprehensive. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought, it's exactly what we need. We need to take little steps and prove that it can be done, and, and the sky's not gonna fall. And so, it's a different way to look at, at the world, and I, I love the rec commissions, you know, it's, it's not about the organizations, it's about the kids. And so, framing it, framing it was what I guess I really needed, too.
Well, I just, again, appreciate everyone involved acknowledging the fresh start.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Greater Wichita YMCA in agreement, forming a partnership between the City of El Dorado and the YMCA, expanding opportunities for youth sports and activities effective after approval of both parties.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. On our agenda, we're down to new business. Anything from the commission you'd like to bring up?
I got a lot of cold comments on Oak Street. Says it looks fantastic.
I think once you get over that it's gravel, and it's not really gravel, it's milled, over milled asphalt, we can make milled gravel roads look a lot better than we can chip seal roads because they're a little bit hard, and you can't do anything with them, you can't patch them. But a, but a gravel road, you bring the blade in when it needs it, and you can keep it smooth. And so, I, I like Oak Street a lot better today than I did before it was milled.
When I got asked about it, when's it gonna open, Scott?
Public Works has been working on that. Imagine the valley gutter they poured at the intersections, getting close to out of cure by now. They probably, they have a little asphalt tie-in patch to do along 12th, from what I've seen, so imagine sometime this week.
I just think, yeah, I bet you that they just waited today because of hot, couldn't get hot mix, because that's what they'll put on that little strip, and so, as soon as it quits raining, get some hot mat down, I think they'll open it up. Because it's been down 10 days, hasn't it?
It's been down a while.
Huh?
It's been down a while.
I don't think it's been 10 days, yeah.
Well, it's hard.
Needs to be seven, at least, I would think.
I was asked when you're gonna do the rest.
Soon as we get that petition signed. And is Gary working on that?
Yeah, there, there is a person carrying a petition out.
To turn it all to ground, the whole neighborhood?
No, no, to pave Oak Street.
Oh, there is one going? Okay. What about the rest of the neighborhood of...
I think, I think, I think we're getting ready to do 10th, and I don't remember any of the ones that I talked with Brad about, but I remember talking about 10th. 10th's in really rough shape, too. 8th isn't too bad, most places, then those other side streets, the connectors, I don't, Walnut and...
Yeah, if, if they're not, if they're not happening to spend a lot of time with patch out there, then it's probably a lot better have that solid surface for as long as we can hold out.
Right. But I think 12th is failing, and it's almost as bad as Oak was.
But you'll keep Orient, you'll keep Orient paved, right? You all won't mess with Orient?
Hmm-mm.
Isn't Orient is paved from 12th now?
And I think it's a city street, isn't it?
It's a bypass.
It's part of the bypass.
Yeah. I think it's a city street. I think there's curb and gutter on Orient.
But then on the other side of 10th Street, 10th, between 10th and 8th, it's semi-gravel and semi-rod, and semi-ashphalt.
With this road, the oak will get hard again. Time and cars and that oil will reconstitute itself. I mean, it's just like Griffith, you know, Griffith was milled and bladed and got hard on its own in places, and then we've oiled it a little bit and...
Yeah, I think Dustrol's done some testing on it in the past years.
And then, oh, that business right by the, that does our Reclamite.
Out on East Central, yeah.
Yeah. Brain dead right now. But that's, that done work, too. They, they try stuff on it. It's kind of a test area.
And then I got one for the commission on the fireworks. Are we gonna do anything with that, or are we just gonna... My request was for a display out the lake.
Well, I think the effort there, you're right, we need to pick that up. Thanks for, for bringing it back up, but my intent was to, to try and get, and I've had a couple citizens call me interested in being a part of that discussion, to try and get kind of an ad hoc group together to, to come back with recommendations to the commission as a whole.
And what I guess...
And what we haven't had yet in the work session is that discussion about...
And that's the, and that's my plan. If your next work session, the issues that we want to bring up are fireworks, and so have that discussion that you all asked for, and then I want to talk about trash trucks. And so, with fireworks being the bigger discussion item, trash trucks being the smaller one. And so, that's our plan, and so, if you want to have a work session next Wednesday, that's when we'll do it, and if you want to do it later in the month, that's when we'll do it. But that's gonna be the next one, and that's what I thought. Would gather all that information that I sent out, we put in a request to Mr. Gardner, because that's who the prior commission asked to do the work, see if he can get people either from the youth commission to come and tell you what they, what work they did within the community to come up with your, their recommendation, maybe even, and if, if no one can remember, maybe we get some of the youth commissioners that were on then, and we have that list, too. So, planning on that, your next meeting, and so...
Are we gonna talk about how long we're gonna sell them, or you just want to talk about where they're gonna shoot the city display?
Mine was on the city display because what happened out the lake, a lot of people came to the lake, but realized there wasn't gonna be fireworks out there displayed, so they started leaving the lake and going other places.
I don't have a problem with them shooting at the lake, as long as they shoot them off the dam.
My, my only thing I'll say real quick on that is I appreciate the travel, I think we've kind of traveled with it, switched around, is the problem with the lake in what, if you were to go down and see them like the stadium this year, we have a lot of young people that are able to ride their bikes and come down and be a part of all of that, that if it was at the lake, they wouldn't be able to. And so, that, that's my, there's a certain population of folks that just, you know, won't make it out there.
We shot them off the dam one year, didn't we?
Three year, three years, maybe.
We've done it two out of the last five years, haven't we?
Because we've done it two on the...
It's a high, you can see them about anywhere. What I didn't like is when they shot them off Blue Stem. And you couldn't see anything except, you know, the sixes and the eights, you couldn't see any of the smaller stuff, but I didn't, I don't remember who you called or who you got, I just didn't dream of cordless shooting anything off that dam, but we were able to.
We've shot them off the dam twice to do, on the dam, and those are the two most recent. The one before that that was out there, we actually shot on state property on the southwest corner up on that knob, and, and so, so I know we've done it three years since I've been here, and you're, the, the first thing the commission asked was when they used to just give money to Friends of the Lake for the fireworks, the commission asked them to shoot them off the dam so people in town could see them, and Friends of the Lake told them, no, we shoot them off a Blue Stem, and we'll just shoot them off a Blue Stem. And so, I think they did that for a couple years, and then I don't know what's happened lately, but maybe we can ask them what's gone on with that, and then maybe they can't, I think that they've turned the cabins back over to the state, and so maybe they don't have any revenue. I, I can't tell you anymore, I don't know.
They shoot them off Blue Stem, and you can't see them unless you're out of prairie trails, and then you can just see, you can't see them all.
And that was the commission's...
You can't hear them, and that's part of the fun, is hearing them.
And that was the commission's, that was the commission's issue, was citizens in El Dorado can't see them.
Right.
And, and that's who they're for.
Is there a place where they could be seen at both areas?
Shoot them off the dam, there isn't anywhere on that lake you can't see them.
No, I'm talking about in the ballpark. Would they be able to see them?
My, my only thing, and we can talk about this, too, at the work session, but I was just, I thought the city did one of the best jobs in the past few years with the Fourth of July this year and moving it to East Park, and how well received it was there, and then that night, I just, I mean, for me, the fireworks are for everyone, but, you know, young people, really, you know, and the kids were just lined on their bikes on the sidewalks, and I mean, I, that is what I want to see out of it, more than everyone at the lake having a fireworks show. But I'm down for both, as long as we maybe let people know it rotates.
But I'm going to assume we're gonna talk about fireworks in general at work sessions?
Yeah, that's right. We're trying to hear what has been talked about before, so that we can decide whether we want to keep this discussion going or not, and then the other part of it is, if at that time also decide to talk about it at our next commission meeting, if we needed to try and enlist an ad hoc type advisory group to, to give us some input on it. So, I think that was my intent of it. I want to hear what's been said before, I want to see if that's something, if this commission wants to move forward with something different, and whether we want to engage the public more on that discussion.
That's what we anticipate.
Okay.
And so, the, do you want to meet next Wednesday?
And we'll, and we'll decide something this year, right?
Yes, no.
Yeah, well, you...
Because I know it's only fair.
When you, what I anticipate is that, that this will be a discussion until you come to a consensus or vote on something, and then once that happens, we'll put it into place. And so, that's why...
Nick, it would be my intent that if we're gonna vote on something, we're gonna do it in December of this year, or it won't happen this year, it won't happen for the next outcome, because you're right, I think there are...
Those fundraisers, groups.
There are vendors that need to plan that far in advance.
And I think six, six months, I don't know how long it takes to plan that, but I just want, I just want to give them plenty of time.
And if we're gonna, and in my opinion, if we're gonna make a change, you want to make it soon.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
So are we next Wednesday? Is that Fort River or Ford?
It's fine with me.
We'll be here.
Can't be Thursday, that's a cheese game.
Not a four.
Seventeenth?
We're not gonna sit here for three hours and talk about fireworks.
Well, I'm gonna go up the Arrowhead, though.
Oh, okay. No, Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, four o'clock.
I guess I'd like to add that that meeting is open to the public.
Absolutely.
We're gonna have discussion.
Yep.
No decisions are made during those meetings, just discussion and information to be brought to this commission meeting later for a decision if necessary.
Yes.
Okay.
Can people speak at work sessions if they're invited to, if they're invited to speak?
If you, if you want to allow people to speak, they can. There's, it's, it's your meeting. The only thing that's set is the topics, and that's done when you sign the special meeting. But how you, how you manage that, it, it's dependent. I mean, there's been, you know, you've even had executive work sessions, but there's times when you are actively seeking public input at a work session, and so you have people come and...
And talk to us, but you're, I think it's invited to speak.
Right.
It's not an open, personal appearance type place.
Right.
Okay. Any else have something to add?
Real quickly, I'll just remind everyone and encourage folks that next weekend, not this weekend, but next weekend, is Fall Fest, and that's the Walnut River Festival, the Car Show, Oktoberfest, and a hundred years of oil. That celebration parade will be that Saturday. And I know the museum, I think, has an event that night, but anyways, all those activities are happening next weekend, so make sure to check that out. I've brought this up, I want to say maybe a year or two ago, but what, what part, is it the boy or in Central? That setup, is that our responsibility, or is that part of the turnpikes or the highways?
The, the intersection that's on Central is KDOT.
It's KDOT. I'm just, I mean, I obviously drive by that every day, and it's, I'm just afraid that we're gonna have something really bad happen at that intersection with the amount of folks. And it's usually out of town folks, obviously, coming off 254, they're looping around to the turnpike, but they don't, for some reason, understand that turn signal. And there's people that, you know, I mean, it's just a mess, like they're sitting out in the middle of the road, and someone's got a green light trying to go, and then they're going around. And if someone just happens to be flying in off 254, I don't know, it just makes me, I mean, that's like a weekly thing for me to see, and again, someone from out of town, and I, I don't know if we can do anything about that or have a conversation, but I just, it doesn't seem safe at all.
I don't...
Because they don't obey the speed limit coming off 254. It's 50 way back to, to the west. And I came through there today, I had to go over to Wichita and came back, and I was running 45 when I saw, you know, because it was raining. I had, I had people going around me that had to be running 70 mile an hour, because, oh, that speed limit sign is on the back of another sign.
Yeah.
I mean, I think...
But it's that turn signal.
Given, given a different situation, no engineer would design anything like that. I, I mean, I think no one would disagree that it's easy to be confused. I mean, I live here, and I still won't, I won't turn left coming into town. I mean, I go straight and go to either MedCaf or Village, even though I know how to do it.
I just hate for them to be reactive to that after something really bad, because I mean, it...
Well, and we, we had hoped that with the, if we had gotten the rail transload facility, that that would have been a component, and so we could have fixed it. I mean, Scott, there's nothing that says we can't put it on a project and try to...
We could try, the, the hardest thing is having that fifth leg that is the turnpike coming into it. And as tight as that is, it, it's something, just recently, KDOT and I talked about, about that intersection. And I think the Secretary of Transportation's planning to come down sometime in October. That would be a great thing to talk to him about.
And that, yeah, and that's all I ask, because I understand that there's, that I, I really would just hate for us to be reactive after something.
I think, yeah, the biggest player in this would have to be the, the turnpike, probably, and changing.
Did they, did they acquire the ground to put the interchange onto Wanda? Or did they just design it?
I don't, I don't think there's any additional right of way down there at all, just conceptual design, so...
Well, yeah, when they come, I mean, if we can just maybe bring it up to them and see, that, I mean, that's all I'm asking at this point, but as long as we kind of, I guess, keep our eye on it, I don't know.
I think that, yeah, if they could find funds somehow, and they're really big on roundabouts nowadays. That's a five-legged intersection.
I hate those guys.
Yeah.
You may, you may hate them, but...
They're efficient.
You know, you don't stop. You get to slow down and yield, and so they move traffic better, and that's the...
And by no means am I saying that's what we're advocating for this morning.
No, 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 no.
I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's a system that uses control intersections like that.
Yeah.
When is the Quick Trip, Haverhill Central, going to be completed?
Here, here really shortly. They tried to lace my asphalt today. The rain kind of set them back a little bit. Really, all that's left out there is finishing up the asphalt. It's gonna take a while. It's 14 inches asphalt, so we have to do that in three-inch lifts. And then there'll be the red concrete border inside the medians, and then they'll pretty much be done with the right-of-way work and get all the traffic control out of the way.
Am I the only one that sees that as a traffic hazard?
As far...
I mean, it's just, I can just imagine seven o'clock in the morning, everybody getting their coffee on the way to work.
I've got another word for it, but...
I mean, it just, maybe I haven't quite got the concept of how traffic is going to be turning and all that yet, but...
Oh, turning into Quick Trip?
Turning into Quick Trip, getting out of Quick Trip.
The, um...
To be determined.
The driveway on Central, you'll see it kind of has that skew angle in it.
Yes.
Heading to the northeast, kind of, yeah.
Yes.
That's so that you are, you can only make a left-hand turn into that driveway. If you're sitting on their driveway off of Central, you can only make a right-hand turn out. You cannot cross traffic and make a left out to head east down Central. To be able, the full access driveway that you can do anything you want coming in or out is on Haverhill, on the very north side of their property.
Okay, so Haverhill, you can go in or out, makes no difference.
They have two driveways on Haverhill. The one farthest to the south would only be a right-in, right-out, so right turn in or a right turn out. The one on the north, full access, left turns, right turns. The one on Central that they have would only allow a left turn in or a right turn in and a right turn out, if that makes sense. The restriction is a left turn out. And that's why you see the skew in it, so a vehicle can't even attempt to make that maneuver. I'm sure.
Somebody will.
I think I'll wait till later in the morning to get my coffee.
Haverhill.
Scott, when they finish to Wanda, are they gonna...
Come downtown.
Are they gonna be able to smooth that intersection out a little bit? I mean, is that transition there, adding that intersection?
To Wanda and Haverhill?
To Wanda and Haverhill.
On, on Haverhill?
Yeah, where that just comes out. I've, I've had a couple people think, or tell me that's just rough, that's a kid.
The asphalt, we're still awaiting our surface lift, so it is probably about two inches down.
Well, I mean, before, I mean, before they even started, they said it was rough, but they were just wondering if it would, if it was gonna be, if they were gonna go on out in there a little bit, or does it stop right there?
It, it stops right there. We, we have had some problems at Haverhill and Wanda over the years. A lot of settling and groundwater issues. We've replaced two, two sets of quite lengthy stint of pavement, put under drains in it, probably in 2005 or '04, somewhere in there. Yeah, we're just battling settlement. It's, it's 12 inches of concrete, has a solid base under it, but there's a lot of groundwater we're battling, so it is a rough ride, but it's concrete, too, so... It's something we may look at, be able to grind some of the concrete down and make it a little smoother, if need be.
And then if we go further to the west, would you include that intersection at, how, how old's that intersection?
That intersection is late 90s, somewhere in there.
And the county project won't include that intersection. They'll start by the college.
Right, yeah, right at the end of the improvement, so that signal was put in with, I believe, we actually landed some state funds to put that in in the late 90s, and then we did the concrete all throughout it.
When are you gonna start on the other side, by the college?
You know, I just had a meeting with their maintenance director a couple weeks ago, or maybe even last week. They're interested in the college taking that up again and carrying a petition and requesting you all to consider initiating the improvement via their petition. So I, I think they've planned on it over the last year in, in their budgets, so more than likely, it'll be coming to you shortly.
Real quickly, if I could share one more quick thing. I wanted to make a comment about the police department, and I thought the piece KWCH did was really nice with all the negative stuff going around in the news about cops and the situation, and I just thought that piece was really nice. But also, I, I hear more positive comments about our police department and our fire department and the effort that they all make in being involved, especially with the youth in the community. And I just want to say that I, I appreciate that a lot, and to hear that is nice. And I know that they have made, and for a while, but continue to make that effort. But anyways, seeing that piece KWCH did was nice, and I thought, well done.
I thought so, too, and, and for me, the part I liked is when they go, we don't just have a community policing unit, this is our expectation of all of our officers. To me, that's, that's organizational dynamic right there. It's saying who we are and, and what we view our responsibility is. And so it's not some of our people do community policing, it's all of our department. And I think people, I think you can easily have a disconnect if you only interact, because your most common time you interact is when a family is in crisis. That's when you see police, and so you get, if you're not engaged, let them turn on the sirens, let them play on a fire truck. If you're not engaged in the positive time, you automatically go to negative when you think about law enforcement and public safety. And so I think it is, I think it's a, it's a mindset that, that's not, we may come in a crisis, but we're trying to de-escalate the crisis. And so I did, too. I, I really liked it, and I, and I like Channel 12, and that, I think they're fully cognizant that we're part of their viewers and come over here and really do a good job with this, and so I appreciated them coming and doing it.
Well, and just the recent story that I had from a citizen was, there was a young girl that had a lot of fear of the police due to, you know, a home situation and what happened when the police would come to the house. And anyways, one of our officers went over and met with the child and talked to him and, and then, you know, helped eliminate that fear. And to me, that just, that says a lot about the character of the department and everyone involved. So I just, I, I can't show enough gratitude for all that, so... Good work.
Anything else? I'll share a couple of things. I attended, two weeks ago, the League of Kansas Municipalities Regional Mayor meetings, and there were several of us there hosted in Derby. The topics of note would be some of the changes that came in, in this past Kansas legislature in 2015. Share a couple of things. The election changes, we should all be, pay attention to. Those of us, the, the state changed spring elections to be fall elections. So those, those of us who have terms that are ending in April of 2017 now have terms ending in November of 2017, and January swearing in, so there's two months, as, as the bill stands now, two months of lame duck city commissions across the board. I think it's something to pay attention to. And, and the other thing about it is the budget cap. The state legislates, placed a cap on municipal governments. I think that counts as county and townships and city and the like. I don't know whether townships are in that or not.
I think just cities and counties.
Cannot increase our budget without public vote. Now, those, those things passed, but they are also full of a lot of holes and conflicts. And the league recommended, and I think Herb and I have had some discussions, too. We're not going to make, all of these require ordinance changes to our, our municipal code, but we're not going to make those changes until after the 2016 session, as they try and repair or otherwise resolve some of the conflicts that are associated with both of these bills. But just thought I'd bring it to your attention, that that's happened.
Thank you.
That's really all I have for new business, just to report that. It was a good, it was a good session, put on by the league, it was well-attended, and there are more of them coming. Thank you for that. Any other new business? All right, we're down to a city manager's report.
I wanted to just update the community, really, on what they may, we've been draining the Sixth Street water tower. Thought I'd tell everyone what we're doing. When it, when it gets hot, normally, people use more water, and so we don't, so that cycles the water towers. Because it has rained and still got hot, heat takes out the chlorine out of water. So we're draining that to cycle towers. You'll see us out fleshing, and it's about keeping fresh water in our towers, because the water temperature's high now. And yet, it's raining, so no one's, people are not watering their lawns, not having to as much as normal. And so when you see water going down, Sixth Street, when you see us out fleshing, that's what it's about. It's, our, our water's fine, but it's not as fine as we like it, and so we want to keep it what everyone's used to, and so we're fleshing it right now. Oh, and Kurt even came to correct me.
No, actually, Herb did an excellent job of explaining. The only thing I was gonna add is, Sixth Street, because of a lack of use in that area, not as much as other parts of town, we don't turn that tower over as much as we would like, and so it's just about keeping a, a good chlorine residual. And we just take the opportunity to disinfect the tower. It's something that needs to be done every now and then, anyway, so we just thought it'd be a good opportunity to disinfect the tower, take it down, and probably within the next week or two, we'll be filling it again and utilizing it. Only downside is, is you're, you have less elevated storage in case you had a power outage or something, but now we have a generator, so that's not really an issue.
Then I wanted to... Then I wanted to, um, kind of reiterate, one of the things that came out of, um, the work session last week was, um, that I'm going to report about every two months on those initiatives. I thought that, um, Julie's article did a good job of outlining for the city and the citizens what the plan is going forward and what, what are your priorities and that, um, and that you wanted to have that in this, in my city manager's report every couple of months. And so you'll, so we're getting that set up. And then the last thing I wanted to just mention was, we are all signed up for our youth soccer program this fall, but we need eight coaches. So if anyone in our community would like to coach soccer, um, we have opportunities for everybody.
What is that, I mean, for people that might be, I guess, curious, what does that commitment look like? Couple practices a week?
A, one practice a week and a game on the weekend.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay.
How many weeks? He left.
Eight.
Eight?
And it, and it may be that you're in America, so you don't even really have to know much about soccer.
I was going to say, I did it one year and I don't know anything about soccer. But we did pretty well.
I've coached and, uh, if you get them young enough, it's just a pack running around the ball.
Yep.
And they seem to have a good time with that program.
Kickin' the ball.
Or not.
Yep.
Some people don't, some people know how to play.
Yeah.
And coach. That's all I had.
That's all you have? Thank you. Any questions for Herb, for city manager's report? None. Um, executive session is our next item on agenda for the purpose of discussing legal matters. What kind of timeframe do we need for executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need about 20 minutes, please.
20 minutes? So should I say 30?
Twenty.
About 25 minutes. We'll come back when it's, I can't, the glare on that clock, I can't see that.
I move to recess and to an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the city commission room at 9:00, 8:05 PM.
Second.
All right. It's been moved to second, any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Retired.
Okay, we'll come out of, it's 8:05, we'll come out of executive session where we discuss legal matters and no decisions made in the executive session.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's moved to second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. We're adjourned.